Good evening. I'm welcome. I'm calling to order the Yakima City Council July 22, 2025, special meeting. We'll start with a roll call, please.
Berg?
Here.
Brown?
Here.
Byers?
Present.
Deceo?
Here.
Herrera?
Here.
Roy?
Here.
Glenn is absent and excused.
Thank you. So six are present. We will go to item two, which is a public comment. We'll allow 15 minutes for a public comment this evening. State law prohibits electioneering at city facilities. During public comments, speakers cannot campaign for or against candidates or support or oppose any ballot measure in upcoming elections. If you'd like to make a comment in here, at this time, you may fill out a form in the lobby and turn it in to the city clerk. So the first name that we have is Yazu Christ. You have two and a half minutes. Please give us your name and the city in which you live.
My name is Yazu. I live in Washington State in the county and city of Yakima. The revelation is given. Glory and power belong to Yazu Christ, who loves us. He has set us free from our sins by pouring on his blood for us in North America by being murdered. He has made us members of his royal family. He has made us priests who serve his God and mother. Glory and power belong to Yazu Christ forever and ever. Amen. Look, he's coming with the clouds. Every eye will see him, even those who pierced him and cut his head off and put it on a platter and bowed down to it, they will see him. All the nations of the earth will mourn because of him. Zechariah, chapter 12, verse 10. This will really happen. Amen. I am the Alpha and the Omega, the beginning and the end, says the Lord God. I am the God who is and who was and who will come. The revelation is given. This is the revelation from Yazu Christ. God gave to him to show those who served God what would happen soon. God made it known by setting her angel towards serving John. John is a witness to everything he saw. What he saw is God's word and what Yazu has said. Blessed is the one who reads out loud the words of this prophecy. Blessed are those who hear it and think everything it says is important. The time when these things will come true is near. Greeting and praise to God, I, John, am writing this letter. I'm sending it to the seven churches in Asia Minor. May grace and peace come unto you from God. She is the one who is and who was and who will come. May grace and peace come unto you from Yazu. He is the faithful witness, so where his shone can be trusted. He is the first to rise from the dead. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Yazu. Next on the list is Beverly Cook. And let me ask you, Beverly, are you wanting to address the council in this meeting, which is a short meeting for a closed public hearing? Or are you wanting to address the council during the special meeting following? Now is fine. We'll hear you either way.
Okay, I'm Beverly Cook, and I was here last week complaining about the fireworks hitting our home, and we called the police and they wouldn't come because they don't have the manpower to come. I want me, my home, and the citizens of Yakima protected. Fireworks are against the law. It's foolish to make laws you know you're not going to enforce. If you called the police, they would come because of who you are. But I am just an elderly, disabled taxpayer and voter. If these people that break the law had to pay high fines, maybe it would stop. And I want you to hire more police and fire people to protect our homes. And I hope I don't have to come every week to tell you this, but thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Cook. We appreciate it. Mr. Beeler, is there anyone on Zoom who wishes to address the council at this meeting tonight?
No, Mayor Byers, there is not.
Thank you. Then we'll move on. The next item is the special, special meeting items. It's a closed record public hearing and ordinance to consider the hearing examiner's recommendation regarding a rezon request at 203 and 207 Oak Avenue. Hello, this is Connor Kennedy, our associate planner. Before you speak, I have something to read yet. Okay, thank you. Next on the agenda is item 3A, which is a closed record public hearing to consider the hearing examiner's recommend, recommendation regarding a rezon request. The hearing examiner held an open public record hearing and is recommending approval of the rezon application. The council is sitting in its quasi judicial capacity and is now charged with evaluating the hearing examiner's recommendation and the record and deciding whether to pass an ordinance rezoning the property from light industrial M1 to general commercial GC pursuant to the recommendation. Any statements made during the hearing will be limited to the record regarding the rezon application. No other issues are in front of this council, nor may any be discussed in argument or considered when the council makes this decision. This is a quasi judicial hearing, and as such, the appearance of fairness doctrine controls. Each council member must answer affirmatively or negatively to the following questions. I'll ask the questions and then I'll have each of you respond to the questions. Sorry. Question one. Do you have any interest in the property or the application? Or do you own property within 300 feet of the property subject to the application?
No.
No.
No, all right, thank you. Neither do I. Do you stand to gain or lose any financial benefit as a result of the outcome of this proposal?
No.
No.
And neither do I, thank you. Can you hear and consider the application in a fair and objective manner without bias?
Yes.
Yes.
And so do I, thank you. Have you had any ex parte communications with the applicants or anyone else regarding this application? If so, place on the record the substance of your communications so that interested parties have the opportunity to rebut the communications. Any ex parte communication?
No.
No.
Neither have I, thank you. Is there anyone who wishes to challenge any council members' participation in this application or the appearance of fairness? Seeing no one, we'll move on. The following additional ground rules apply to this hearing. All council members participating remotely, no, we didn't have any remote, never mind that, so we'll now start the hearing. As a reminder, presentations and public comments shall be confined to the prior established hearing examiner record, so please begin.
Sure. Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council, and staff. My name is Connor Kennedy. I'm the associate planner here at the city, so I'm going to be discussing rezon number 001-25. So I'm just gonna go over a few items real quick, and then I can answer any questions if you have them. So on February 28, 2025, Rick Glenn submitted a rezon application on behalf of Jay and Kendra Glenn. This is a non-project rezon located at 203 and 207 Oak Avenue, and it's to rezon those two parcels from light industrial, it's the M1 zone, to general commercial or the GC zone. The city council is only considering the proposal to rezon the property. We're not deciding on any kind of development application. This is a non-project rezon. So no comments were received during the proposals comment period. An open public record was held by the hearing examiner on May 22, 2025. The applicant testified in support of the proposed rezon during that hearing, and no other parties testified and no comments were received or submitted during the public hearing. The hearing examiner issued a formal recommendation for the city council to approve the requested rezon of these two subject parcels from light industrial M1 to GC general commercial, and that was on May 30. So that's all. If you have any questions, I can answer them.
Any questions, council? No? Okay, then I will open the public hearing. We have, first of all, one person who'd like to make comment, and that is Yazu.
Yeah. Oh, no, that was.
Although, I'm sorry, we're gonna have you wait till the next, the next one, I'm sorry. Do we have anyone here to testify in regard to the, the subject matter of the public Anyone? All right, seeing no one, then I'll close the public hearing person. Thank you. No behalf council discussion.
I'd like to make a motion if no one has anything. Okay, I moved, I moved to pass the ordinance affirming the hearing examiner's recommendation.
I'll second.
So we have a motion by Councilman Deceo and a second by Deputy Mayor Brown to approve the, the hearing examiner's recommendation. All right? All of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any nos?
Sorry, it would be a roll call.
Yeah, thank you. Go ahead and read it.
This is an ordinance rezoning parcels 18131311427 and 18131311429 from light industrial M1 to general commercial GC and amending the zoning map of the city of Yakima. Berg?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Byers?
Yes.
Deceo?
Yes.
Glenn?
Not here.
I'm sorry. Skip one. Herrera?
Yes.
Roy?
Yes.
Okay, then the vote is 6-0, and the motion is passed. Resolution is adopted. Thank you, council. All right. That brings us to adjournment of this particular meeting. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Madam Mayor, I've moved to adjourn to our next meeting, which is here at City Hall at 5:45 PM.
Second.
So we have a motion by Deputy Mayor Brown and a second by Councilman Berg to adjourn to the next hearing, meeting, which is at 5:45 PM here at City Hall. All of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Then we are adjourned. Good evening and welcome. I will call together the Yakima City Council Special Meeting of July 22, 2025. We'll start with a roll call, please.
Berg?
Here.
Brown?
Here.
Byers?
Present.
Deceo?
Here.
Glenn?
Here.
Herrera?
Here.
Roy?
Here.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is executive session.
Madam Mayor, I move to executive session to discuss pending or potential litigation pursuant to RCW 42301101I until 6 PM.
Second.
So we have a motion by Deputy Mayor Brown and a second by Councilman Berg to move into executive session as allowed by RCW 42.30.1101I until 6 PM. All of that, all of us in favor, say aye.
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 Aye? Any opposed? Right. This council is expected, is not expected to take any further action following the Welcome back. I am going to recommit the special meeting back to order. Next on the agenda is public comment, which tonight we will allow 15 minutes for public comment. State law prohibits, excuse me, state law prohibits electioneering at city facilities. During public comments, speakers cannot campaign for or against candidates or support or oppose any ballot measure in the upcoming election. When I call your name for public, public sharing, please come to the podium. You have two and a half minutes to give us your first name and, actually, your whole name and the city in which you live. Thank you. So on the list. The first person is Yazu.
I think he left.
He left. I think he left. Okay, great, thanks. Next is Kenton Gartrell.
Kenton Gartrell, I own property both in the county and in the city limits. I have given you a resolution to look over and to consider in your next meeting. This resolution actually has to do with you creating a permit. I know I'm usually the last guy to actually advocate for permits, but within city limits, within Washington State, 10% of your drivers actually will refuse or are not renewing their tabs since 2019, which is a national statistic, which is done by the state of Washington as well. You're losing over $200,000 a year in just car tabs because people are, are protesting them because, obviously, on a ballot in the past, it passed, and people feel that is their right to actually have a $30 car tabs. So a resolution that I'm proposing to you, which I have called the $30 car tabs, is actually a permit which allows the peace officers of your city, the office, the police officers of your city, to abide by state law, to abide by their city laws, and allow the public that wishes to protest peacefully, nonviolently, as they're driving down the road with legal insurance, with legal car plates, with a legal car, to pay $30 for a permit, which they can then show the officer upon being pulled over, and the officer can do his, his job, smile, and be happy and know he's created a safer environment for the public of his citizens. This, just this alone will create over $200,000 a year in your city, assuming that 10% of that population, which is currently in peaceful protest, actually would pay that to drive around. Now, obviously, it doesn't work outside of the city limits because you're only in charge of the city, the city limits of, with this permit, but others, this would show that other cities can do the same thing. It does not interfere with law, pass case law. Actually, the city of Seattle has lost three lawsuits in the last three years, all having to do with peaceful, the right to peaceful protest involving the Seattle PD. And your, your legal staff will also be able to go to case law all the way back to 1969, which has to do with the city and a county or municipality or state has the right to regulate peaceful protesting through permit processes but cannot infringe or obstruct them. So you are actually helping your citizens by giving them a way to peacefully protest without punishing them for adhering to their rights and their rights to our democracy. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gartrell. Next is Gina Hernandez.
Gina Hernandez, Yakima resident. This council has spent tremendous amount of time and funds on priority-based budgeting and on the budgeting issue over multiple years. The cost to send two distinct levies to the people and to the voters costs less than you have spent in budget and prioritization efforts to this point. While I don't believe city council should be in the business of party politics, which Republican, which Democrat, which independent would seek to deny the opportunity for voters to speak on an issue of such magnitude as our budget? Would any of you truly assert your authority or your wisdom over your constituents collectively? This is not about you imposing or raising any form of tax. This is about you putting a stop to this city's habit of spending dollars to save dimes and letting the voters determine their priorities. Members of this council approved cutting firefighters in a relatively recent budget cycle, which led to about $1.5 million in overtime in our fire department. That was preventable, though I was not heated when I said so. You have staff recommendations. You have the completely separate and independent recommendation of your budget advisory committee, none of whom are city employees, but all of whom gave months in meetings and analysis and weighing options and ideas from vastly different perspectives. In the end, the advisory committee recommended, very similarly to what your staff recommended. And should the 1/10th public safety tax not be workable, the advisory committee supported fully the staff's recommendation. While I do not know why staff recommended two separate levy options for the voters, I know the advisory committee did so to maximize the options, choice, and direction of your voters. Your budget advisory committee meetings were open to the public in case anyone actually wanted to know the details and vet their ideas. A lack of experience or knowledge has led to significant amount of misunderstandings in the public and in this council chambers. This budget matter has been independently studied on behalf of the council. I find it odd that the council, excuse me, sorry, I'm trying to get this done quickly. This council has given so little credit, so little weight to what was done on their behalf. The city has increased expenses, just like the rest of us do, due to inflation, cost Olympia, insurance, you name it. It's the reality of the situation. We all have those things. In a time for the, it's time for the voters of Yakima, who have not approved a property tax increase in more than 40 years, to speak for their vote. If they fund public safety, then they do. If they fund parks and recreations, they do.
Mr. Hernandez.
If they don't, we then will know where things must be cut. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. Next is Peter Rasmussen.
Evening, council. I'm Peter Rasmussen. I live in Seela. I serve as a president for local 469 Yakima Firefighters Association. I'm just here to express some concerns from our firefighter's point of view with closing Station 92. I kind of have the feeling that it's, it's, it would just be like a, isolated to West Valley and roughly the 25,000 people that it immediately serves, but it would impact the whole city with leaving a void, avoided area on west, there wouldn't be an engine west of 40th. So if there's a call in that area, another station, a neighboring station's gonna take that call, and then their station, their area would be uncovered. And then, same thing, if they get a call in their area, then another neighboring station, it's just gonna be a domino effect to have only five, five engines in, in the city. Also, for a standard house fire, we send four engines and a truck, leaving two engines to cover the city for, for a standard house fire. We have those regularly. Taking a, an engine out of the city, then it would only leave one engine to cover the whole city during that fire. Longer response times, everybody focused on, on long, on long response times, but there's other, there's other downsides to, to the non-emergency side of closing a station. So there's a lot of preventative measures that Station 92 does with schools, with elderly, vulnerable population. We install smoke detectors out there. We do constant preventative measures for the wildland out there. And, yeah, we would have, and then we would have less, less people for callback when we have a large incident. We call back off-duty crews to come back into the station, into the city. We would have less people with that as well. I don't see fixing the overtime budget. I think less crews means more calls. Those guys will be run ragged. I think guys will be taking more time off. There's, they're more prone to injury, less guys on scene, and I think guys will be taking more time off, and they'll be just as much overtime. It also eliminates a critical safety net that provides beyond emergency response.
Mr. Rasmussen, I'm sorry, but your time is up. Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
I would just encourage you guys to put a levy through, also unless the voters talk. Speak.
Thank you. Next is Connor Hopkins.
Good evening. My name's Connor Hopkins. I'm a resident of Yakima County. I just wanted to come and speak with you guys tonight on my perspective. And first, I have great respect for the, the challenge of the budget issues, and I'd like to state that I am in favor of letting the community decide, as residents of the city of Yakima. I am a tremendous advocate for access to green space, quality of life, mental and physical wellness, and I believe that, you know, the community that I strive to live in is full of residents that are mentally and physically healthy. I believe quality of life is one of the biggest tools that can keep people in Yakima happy. It can keep people visiting our community. And throughout the last year, I really have learned the hard way that currently in our community, quality of life rests right on the shoulders of emergency, emergency services. There is no quality of life without fire and police response. And I just, I really urge you guys, when you make decisions, when you think about decisions for the future of our community, that we don't just dispense quality of life and, and our physical and mental well-being as, as something that we don't consider because it's not on a budget line. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hopkins. Next is Tony Corsi.
Tony Corsi, where I live, my head is where I'm at. I informed you guys, because you guys set the rules, you guys joined up with Seela and Seela joined up with you guys, and Planning Department went back and forth. Jeff Peters went from Yakima to Seela. What I'm telling you guys is I have water right claim in Seela. Now, listen, I had water right claim in Seela that I got from an individual and the power of attorney signed. Somebody took it upon theirself, whether it was Yakima or Seela, decided to go to the lady and have her sign a document to get that water right claim. Didn't get the power of attorney, but had the elderly lady sign. We got issues. I'm not happy with that little sneak around you guys trying to do. It's not gonna work. And the 45th guy back east wants to play with names. I know volunteer. I took two box trucks to Volunteer Park in Seela and helped finish that project on the park that I donated. That's volunteer. The crosswalk was not volunteer. I turned in documents to all seven councils before you. The sad thing is, when they got shocked, the money came in, they all got raises. Yeah, I didn't work for them to get raises, and they were told not to. So this is not done. God bless. Behave, be safe, and think about what happened.
Thank you, Mr. Corsi. Mr. Beeler, is there anyone online who wishes to address the council this evening?
No, Mayor Byers, there is not.
Thank you. Then we will go on to our special meetings, items number, special meeting on the agenda, item A. And item A is a proclamation from the, for the Training Center of Yakima. I need a motion, please. First of all, let me ask, because all the council had opportunity to read it.
Yes.
All right, then I will take a motion, please.
I move to approve the proclamation and request that it be read and presented. Second.
So we have a motion by Deputy, excuse me, amongst by Councilman Deceo and a second by Deputy Mayor Brown to accept the proclamation and have it read this evening. All of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Thank you, council. So I have the honor of reading the proclamation, and may I have Sergeant Major Anton Ruffin to come up to the podium, please? Thanks, good to see you again.
Good luck, ma'am.
Captain Ryan Borden?
He's not here, ma'am.
He's not here, okay. And Captain Chris Assleton? Is he here?
Not here, ma'am.
Okay, then we are happy to have you, Sergeant Major.
Thank you, ma'am.
I am gonna read the proclamation, and we'll give you some time to say a few words if you'd like.
Yes, ma'am.
This is a City of Yakima proclamation. Whereas the City Council of Yakima, Washington proudly proclaims its heartfelt recognition of the Yakima Training Center on the occasion of the 250th anniversary of the United States Army honoring their enduring legacy of courage, sacrifice, and service. Whereas the Yakima Training Center, a vital military installation, has significantly contributed to the defense of our nation by providing essential training grounds for generations of soldiers who have dedicated themselves to protecting the freedoms and values cherished by our residents. And whereas, the men and women who serve and train at the Yakima Training Center exemplify unwavering commitment, resilience, and patriotism, thereby strengthening the security and determination of the United States. And whereas, the families of active duty service members provide indispensable support and make profound sacrifices, which are integral to the success of their loved ones' service and the vitality of our military community. And whereas, the city of Yakima acknowledges that this recognition is long overdue and expresses profound gratitude to all who have served, trained, worked, and supported the loved ones of the Yakima Training Center, both past and present, for their selfless dedication to our nation. And whereas, Yakima, an all-America city, embraces its deep connection to the Yakima Training Center and the United States Army, proudly affirming its identity as a community committed to supporting our troops, their families, and the mission of the armed forces. Now therefore, I, Patricia Byers, Mayor of the City of Yakima, and on behalf of the Yakima City Council, hereby proclaim that Yakima, Washington shall henceforth identify itself as a city that proudly supports our military. We honor the historic significance of the Yakima Training Center and the United States Army and the families and active duty service members, and we pledge to continue our support, gratitude, and respect for all who serve and their families who stand by them to protect our great nation, dated this 22nd day of July, 2025.
Mayor Byers, council members, on behalf of YTC and my Colonel, my, my Commander Colonel Gambrell, I would like to thank you and the city of Yakima for extending your, extending this proclamation to YTC. The civilians, all of the service members that work on YTC, we greatly appreciate everything, the continued advocacy for YTC and the things that are the training that our soldiers conduct on YTC. We greatly appreciate, appreciate everything that you have, your advocacy, everything that you continue to do for us, and we will try our best to make sure that we remain great citizens and soldiers in the Yakima community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Please come over, Sergeant Major, and shake our hands.
Thank you. Thank you.
Keep us safe.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. That was an exciting honor. Item B is a resolution authorizing a right-of-way use permit application, RL 240. Item B is resolution authorizing a right of way use permit application RL 240082 for Young Women's Christian Association of Yakima at 910 Chestnut Avenue. And Bill Preston, our acting city engineer, will present to council.
Good evening, council. So the YWCA submitted a request for a long term right of way use permit for some stairs and a landing at their facility at 910 Chestnut. There's still plenty of sidewalk around that, the stairs that they need to install. And so pursuant to chapter 820, we bring these long range, long term right of way use permits to City Council for approval. So, and right now, staff does recommend approval for this.
Thank you. Any questions or comments by council?
So is the permit $9 million a year?
It is $100 a year renewal.
We gotta raise the fee.
I would move to adopt the resolution.
Second.
So we have a motion by Councilman D C O and a second by Councilman Herrera to adopt the resolution. All of those in favor, we better have roll call vote in this place, thank you.
This is a resolution authorizing the issuance of a right of way long term use permit to allow stairs and landing on the north side of the building at 910 West Chestnut Avenue. Berg?
Yes.
Brown?
Yeah.
Byers?
Yes.
D C O?
Yes.
Glenn?
Yes.
Herrera?
Yes.
Roy?
Yes.
All right, resolution passed at 7:00 and is adopted. Thank you, Mr. Preston. Next, we move into item C, which is a discussion of cities, excuse me, city service level reductions at $9 million, 4.5 million, $3 million, and 1.8 million. And the city manager, Vicki Baker, and our financial director, Craig Warner, are going to talk to council.
Good, good evening, council and mayor. We do have a presentation for you. I will run through that with Craig. We're going to tag team it a little bit and try to get through that fairly quickly so you can have a good discussion tonight. So if we could get that rolling, okay, let's go ahead, start. Community to Crossroads, we remember that presentation from a few months ago, reminding everyone of where we're at and that we're a decision point for Yakima. Thought that I would start the beginning, though, and kind of reset, because it's been a year since before I was here, you guys all got together as a council and you talked about your goals and priorities for the city. And in reviewing these and what we're looking at for decisions, trying to find alignment with what your goals are and what your decisions are tonight, I thought might be good to review this again. So looking at safe and healthy Yakima, talking about reducing the number of people living on the streets, crime reduction, safe infrastructure, fire prevention through design, that's the safe and healthy priority. You had a resilient Yakima, design, build, and maintain robust infrastructure, streamline city processes, which is something I've spent a good amount of time looking at, build capacity to deliver on budgeted expectations, also working on that. Adopt a sustainable budgeting practices. Well, that's what we've done for the last 11 months. So here we are. That has been where we've spent a lot of our time, because that really is the foundation for everything that we're going to build the rest of this on. Diversify and focus on economic development, build and leverage local and regional partnerships. Are you in charge, Craig? Are you moving me? Okay, good. Thriving Yakima. So reducing homelessness, you're my Vanna White, thank you. Reducing homelessness was so important, it's on the list twice for you guys. And so it's something that you've seen a lot of work on, Clean Cities and other things, Pro Act Unit, things like that in the city. Become an attractive tourist and business destination, promote Yakima's unique culture, maximize current access, assets in the community, improve opportunities for youth and families, and become a connected community. That's the thriving Yakima. And then engaged, and boy, did we get everybody engaged. I think we were very successful with this one. In being out in the community and fostering community ownership, promote a positive community image, and developing a culture of two way communication where we are actually listening to our public. And I think we've done a lot of that this year, too. So I just wanted to review all of that really quick. And also, I know you guys don't need to hear this, because you spent so much time in the general fund, but I thought I would take a little bit of time for folks who are just tuning in for the first time and seeing the city funds and structures of the city. There's a lot of money in different places that are not what we're talking about tonight and in this budget. The general fund is really comprised of three main things. It's utility tax, sales tax, and property tax. This is what's in our general fund. These are the main things in there. It's the police department, the pools, the parks, community centers, the courts, the fire department, legal system. We've got facilities management, our IT department, our budget, our finance department, and our HR department that makes sure we have people that we can hire people and manage things. That's what's in the general fund. What is not in the general fund is what we hear a lot about out in the community. So again, it's not the roundabouts, and I know we hear a lot of, about that. It's not the buses going around town, or the wastewater treatment plant, or the cemetery, or the refuse department picking up the garbage, or homeless programs, because we don't have any, and we don't have any social service programs here either. And we don't have what the federal government does, which is enough money to study fruit flies. We don't do that. We wish we had money to do that, but we don't do that. Craig is going to help with the structural, how do we get here question, because he's better at explaining this than me.
Thank you, Vicki. Good evening, council. So the structural issues really have to do with how, back in the early 2000s, there was a property tax proposal that was passed. It was an initiative at the state level to lower the property tax growth to a 1% growth. And before that, it was you could, you could levy up to 6%. And ultimately, the 1% was, it started out at 2, that was overturned by the courts, it came back as a 1%. That's what was ultimately approved again. And, and what this really does is it has really put a hamper on, on, on governments as a whole, because 1% is, it's very difficult when you're looking at the wages, all the other costs, it's really difficult to stay up with the cost of inflation overall. But it was also one of those things that was also put to the voters to, to, that the voter said, if you need additional resources, come to us and ask for it. That was one of the key points of the initiative when it went, when it went through. Ultimately, we are not seeing costs or our revenue stay up with inflation. We, for the last five or six years, have received federal funds for COVID and, and to help with the pandemic and the economic impacts of that. But those funds have now been exhausted. We've used all of those. And as I mentioned, Yakima's not alone. This is not the only government that's having these same problems. There's going to be governments up and down the valley, there's going to be governments across the state and across the United States that are now running out of these one time funds, and they're going to, now they have to figure out what they're going to do. One of the other things that we've also had in, in the city of Yakima is a large population growth. When we started out, we had 65,000 people here, you know, a couple of decades ago. We are now over 100,000 people in the city of Yakima. So that's a lot of extra services to provide for that, you know, for basically a third more people. And then there have been cuts over the last 20 years, but I think those have always been around the edges. They have not been to really make meaningful adjustments to, to how the, the city spends. So we've had some carry, carry forward funding, or we've had a deficit that we've been carrying forward, we've been using one time funds to be able to cover that. And we've ultimately gotten to a point where 2025 was the year where we, we adjusted our reserves from 16.7 as a minimum reserve down to 12. And we, we basically used all of the, the last of the, of the federal funds that we had. So it, it really is, then we have this deficit of about $9 million. And, and where do we go from there at, at that point? And we'll get into more into that in just a second.
So just to review, and you know, this is again for people out in TV land, we did, we are required to pass a budget, constitutionally required. By the end of last year, we passed a budget. We knew we were going to have to adjust it this year. It was not a sustainable biennial budget. And so we do have to adjust that by the end of this year. One of the things that the council asked for last fall, when we were talking about this, was spending a lot of time out in the community and really engaging the people and finding out what their priorities were. So I spent a good amount of time going into town halls and, you know, meeting with, with the community members and groups at Rotary and, and anywhere that would have me, pretty much, I went everywhere, and, and gave this, a similar presentation to this, so that everyone kind of understood the problem, mainly just communicating with the public about that. We did a survey of the public as well, got about 2,000 responses, and that gave us some good information about how people were feeling about their priorities. It had this, similar to this cut packages you're looking at tonight, a lot of those things were given to the public for their feedback. And we brought all that back to the council for consideration. The Citizen Budget Committee met for three months. We met every Wednesday night for an hour or two and went through every department and asked every question. All of our department heads answered as many questions as they possibly could, and we were very transparent with the budget committee to let them really comb through the details. And they came out with recommendations to the council in June. And that's kind of where we're at now. We are at the point where we need to have any revenue recommendation, if it's going to go to the ballot, we've got just a matter of a few days now to decide. And the mid biennial, mid biennial adjustments that are made for next year's budget, we need to do this fall. And so that's roughly the timeline. Look at that, it's fancy. I know. City council cut packages.
No music?
How much did that cost?
It was part of the package.
And you don't want me to sing, so.
Yeah.
Please don't.
Okay, so Craig's going to take it from here.
So, and I apologize how small this is, and I realize it is. There's some other slides that are even smaller. So what council asked me to do was come back and look at the different sizes of, and recommend packages of 1.8 million, $3 million, $4.5 million, and $6 million. So that's what I've tried to do. This first one is, is if this was a 7.2 million levy, if that was a request, what would a 1.8 million cut package look like? So I've heard many times discussion about eliminating the lobbying and council travel. This would, would do that. It does keep the lobbying for the federal in place, because that is one of those things where the return on investment is, is pretty high. We get a lot of money from the federal government, and if we cut that, we would probably lose a lot of those dollars. That would be $120,000. Eliminating the funding for the fireworks, this is the fireworks out at the fairgrounds, the annual 4th of July celebration. Reducing the windows alive funding, $10,000. Eliminate the flowers downtown, that's $44,300.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
It says here to reduce the windows alive funding, isn't $10,000 good manually? So we're actually eliminating them?
It is eliminated, yes, yes, thank you.
So it's not reducing?
It's eliminating.
Well, and sometimes when you see the word eliminate, I think Craig and I can maybe clarify, too, that's eliminating the general fund contribution.
Yes.
So we won't be providing general fund. That doesn't mean that they can't fundraise or, or find a way to fund something, it's just not going to be in our general fund.
Thank you, yeah. Reduce economic development staff by $100,000. This was a vacant position that is, that is open right now. Reduce or remove the Main Street match funding out of the general fund. So we get basically 25%, we, we have to match 25% for every dollar that is spent. So ultimately, if we spend $200,000, or if 200,000 is spent, we can match it with $50,000 and we get 150,000 included. Eliminate trolley maintenance of $10,000. Eliminate the alley maintenance program, program by 30,000, or which would eliminate the program. Eliminate funding for sidewalk improvements, 105,000. Reduce street maintenance funding by 500,000. Or there is the option also there if at some point the, the council would like to look at the TBD funds for the second $20 that's available. Create a reserve for snow and ice control funding, 250,000. And this is one of those creative ways to, this was originally 500, or excuse me, it was 250,000 was a reduction. What you can do is budget 250,000 ongoing and put a 250,000 reserve aside, so that if you have a year where we have large amounts of snow and ice, you can tap that reserve. If you don't need it, then you leave the money there and you go forward. And if you do use it, then we just have to find a way to put money back into that reserve so it's there for the next winter, just in case you need it. Eliminate day camps, this is in the, the Parks Department. It's 170,000. And this is at basically all of the parks and I believe also.
There's two, I think. Is Kissel and?
Miller, I think.
Miller, okay.
Miller, okay. Reduce the, the Tahoe Cemetery watering, 15,000. This is the, the money we use in the spring before the, the water that's in the irrigation system is actually usable. It plugs up all the sprinklers, so we want to make sure that our grass is green for Memorial Day and Mother's Day. We also know there's a, a lot of things in here that are potentially where we can raise fees to help offset some of these costs as well. This would probably be one of those. Eliminate graffiti removal program, 72,500.
Can I, can I ask why the Tahoe Cemetery watering is not part of the parks maintenance?
I think it.
Part of the parks department.
It is.
It is part of it. It just got separated out as a new budgeted item, I think, last year. And so, as Craig said, this would eliminate that general fund contribution of the 15, but we might be able to find that in the cemetery budget by looking at the fees and so forth.
I remember, I think two years ago, I had an issue with that and we didn't get water. And the Tahoe Cemetery during Mother's Day and Memorial Day was awful. And we heard a lot about it.
Yeah, the irrigation water plugs up really bad, and then they can't get it through, so they, they tapped it into the domestic water line so that they could use it. This is the 15,000 to pay for the domestic water for that time period. Let's see, eliminate funding for the adult sports program, and again, this 36,917, this would likely be one of those that is, it's not a reduction, it's a, it has to fund itself. They have to increase the fees to the adults that use the, the programs. And then the last one on this 1.8 million cut is reduce funding for community recreation, 50,000.
And is that like the concerts in the park kind of thing?
Yes, yep, exactly.
I think there was an original figure on that somewhere for about 63,000. Is there a reason for the difference?
Yeah, I think, I think this was ultimately the number, we may have reduced it and, and moved it into a different place.
Okay.
So. So then this one, like I said, it gets really, really small, I apologize. What I tried to do is, is put on the left, what would be the reductions or the eliminations, and then on the right, the services that would be saved over the, with the 7.2 million dollars, if that was the way council chose to go. With the next package, which would be a $3 million reduction, we've already talked about, over probably about half of these. But as you go down through here, you can see, oops, it didn't go.
Alex.
I was gonna say, mine went. So if you go down through here, you're, we, we did the Tahoe, or the, the Tahoe Cemetery, the eliminate the sporty, the youth sport, oh, excuse me, these are in a little different order. Let me pick up about the 170,000 we mentioned at, at the day camps, if you can kind of see that. And then we did the Tahoe watering, eliminate the youth sports program, 61,000. And again, this is the, the difference between, this is the net cost of that program to the general fund, so there may be an opportunity to raise fees there as well. Close the Franklin Pool, 167,000. This, this is one where Franklin is getting close to needing a, a major capital rehab on it in 2027. So this was one, especially with the opening of the new pool, with MLK Pool, this was on the list. Reduce the Washington. Reduce the Washington Fruit Center, $50,000 operating costs. Reduce Harmon Center, $50,000. Eliminate Legals Department's front office staff, $80,000. Reduce funding for the YPD traffic unit by $160,000. Reduce animal control and parking enforcement officers, this would eliminate one position, that $88,000. Eliminate two YPD crime analysts, $300,000. And eliminate the crime-free rental housing program, $82,000. So that overall would be the $3 million recommendation from staff for reductions.
I had a question, I need to find it again, I'm sorry.
Okay.
So there is a, where is it now? The Clean Cities Program?
Yes.
Okay, there it is. To reduce that, but it also talks about the eliminating besides that, the graffiti removal program. And isn't that part of the Clean Cities?
It is. So it's, it's reduced in two pieces. It was presented as two pieces, graffiti removal and then Clean City, so we left it in there, so you'd be able to see it.
And again, the same question initially, it was for the graffiti removal program, it was to save $88,000, and this says $72,500.
Okay. Um, let's see here.
Say that one more time.
Well, initially-
It was $88,000.
It was $88,000 to stop the graffiti, and now $75,000, I just want to-
Math error, maybe?
Yeah.
Yeah. It's okay, I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay. We will double check all the numbers.
And at this point, I'm just going to say to council, in terms of the Harmon Center and the Fruit Center, Washington Fruit Center, one of the ideas I had, just for you to chew on, is rather than reducing the budget, is to cut them both in half, so they cut their time in half. So instead of programming from eight to five or seven or whatever they do, they would program maybe five days a week or five hours a day, and that'd be another way to do it, to just, anyway, just. Or we could just cut the budget in half and let them figure out what they're going to do. And they can also get sponsors and help in their program, so. I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, that's okay. So I moved to the next slide, which again, really small. Ultimately, it shows on the left what we showed on a bigger slide, and then the services saved over to the right. And you'll see that, you know, a lot of the things already have, we've gone through, the $3 million. And the next piece, which was the next reduction, which was go to $4.5 million.
Okay, I'm going to back up a little over here, I'm sorry, okay. So council, looking at the three bottom items, reduce the, sorry, the four bottom items, reduce funding to YPD for traffic unit, reduce animal control and parking, CSO, eliminate two YPD crime analysts, and eliminate crime-free rental housing. Those reductions to the police department. The one I am most concerned about is the one officer for YPD traffic unit. I really don't want to see them lose an officer, I'd like to see, I'd like to see both our police and our fire departments fully staffed, so that, you know, it will help in a lot of ways. It'll help coverage for the city for sure, and it may reduce some overtime costs, so just.
This side that says services saved, what, I mean, we have the $3 million over here, so what is this for?
So ultimately, what that was, was if you added those two together, that's the $9 million.
Oh, I see.
So if this was a $6 million levy with a $3 million cut.
Okay, so this is the levy?
Yeah.
Okay, great.
The, I did, I did have talked to landlords quite a bit on the crime-free rental housing. They're, originally, they said they're, the way, the way it used to work was worth it. The way it works now, they don't, they don't feel like it would be worth keeping.
I thought at one point they were talking about contracting somebody to do that. I mean, that they can, the landlords can actually have a service for that.
Yeah. So that would leave it on the, on the cut list. And talking with Chief Boyle as well, he has somewhat agreed to having two YPD crime analysts at this point, a reduction. My concern is that reducing the YPD traffic unit.
So then, from here, just to make it bigger, what I tried to do is say, we cut $3 million, we've gone through that, these would be the additional $1.5 million worth of cuts that are added here that we haven't talked about, which would be reduce the code enforcement officers, $171,000. This would be closing or eliminating the general fund's contribution to the Washington Fruit Company Center, that's $269,000, because we'd already done $50,000 already in the last round. Closing Lions Pool, which would be $479,000. Closing the Harmon Center, which would again be an additional $332,000. Reduce YPD and Yakima Fire training budgets by $50,000, and additional reductions to the animal control and parking enforcement of $162,000. So that's the additional $1.5 million to get to a $4.5 million levy and $4.5 million cut package.
I don't want to get rid of any of these.
I don't either.
Yeah, I'm definitely not in favor of closing the Harmon Center, by any means. I will say it for the 25th time in a row, I'm not in favor of closing the Harmon Center.
Neither am I in favor of closing Lions Pool, or the Washington Fruit Center.
Or Lions, or Washington Fruit, yeah.
Correct.
Especially the Harmon Center.
Okay.
And we definitely need animal control. It's a huge problem, yeah.
So then, the remaining things that are left are here, and it was reduce the parks maintenance, maintenance budget to, by $380,000. Closing fire station number 92, $1.7 million. Reducing the YPD and Yakima Fire training budgets, an additional $50,000. Eliminating the YPD crime analysts, the remaining analysis or analysts, $181,000. Eliminating the YPD property crimes unit, $750,000. The gang unit, $1 million. And the YPD narcotics unit, $470,000. So that's the total of the $9 million overall then.
Just like the Harmon Center, I'm going to say, I am not in favor of closing Station 92.
Absolutely not. In fact, I would like to see our, our fire department receive three more slots so that they have enough persons to cover the shifts.
Without overtime.
Without overtime, it would actually be less expensive to hire three more staff, even though they have to be trained, than it is to pay the high levels of overtime we're doing because they don't have anybody to cover, so.
So as we, last time that we met, two weeks ago, the council asked us for a couple of different things, and one of them was also look at the vacant positions. And there was 32.67 positions in the general fund that were just over $3.6 million. Of those 20, 20.67 of those positions, or 2.2 million, were already part of the $9.9 million worth of cuts. And then one of the positions was also a grant, and that was $194,000. So it left 11 positions and $1.2 million left to, to look at and consider. Two of those are fire positions, $314,000. Five of them are in the, in the corrections department or the jail for $554,000, and this is one that I would highly recommend we don't do.
I reinforce that tremendously.
Okay, we need to make sure that we get those filled.
Yes.
Because right now, we're using YPD to backfill those on overtime.
Right.
One of the positions is the acting city engineer, right now, it's actually, it's actually the city engineer position, but we have an acting in, in that position right now at $160,000. One of them, one of the positions is a street inspector, and it's only 49% general fund, it's funded 51% somewhere else. An economic development assistant, again, 60% general fund, 40% somewhere else. And one facility specialist is a little over $74,000. So those are the 11 positions that you could, you could look at.
And going back to the last meeting, I brought up unfilled positions, and, you know, was told that my 33 number was wrong, but it is actually correct in the vacant positions. And so I just want to make sure that the public understands that I was correct in the numbers.
I want to also say, yeah, the thing to know about a vacancy list is that it changes almost every day as people retire, quit, get hired, so it, I mean, yes, it is always, it is a moving target. This is the most recent information-
Yes.
-that we have, and we did a good analysis for you, so you have the full, correct information for decisions.
A part of that is, is some of those things are, we are holding because we need to have three positions in the fire department, we need to have five persons in the jail for our police and fire departments to function fully and to keep our overtime down, so.
And then, just putting in one of the slides that we've used in, in the past, is the property tax, because I know that, that is what is up there. You'll see the majority of the, of the money go, of your property tax dollars, every time you, you give a dollar, most of it goes to schools. 62% is going to the schools. The city gets 20 cents, the county gets 11%, and then you've got the regional library, the county EMS, and the county flood control. That's the dollar, that's where, where the money goes. So the biggest, the biggest piece again is, is the schools.
So we don't get very much.
Yeah, 20, 20 cents on the dollar.
Yeah.
I was just talking to one of the school board members of Yakima School District, and he was telling me that he would be, he would love to have a $9 million deficit right now. And I said, I would love to have 60% of the property tax like you have right now.
Yes.
Me too.
Maybe a fair trade, wouldn't it?
I was going to say, was that this? And then, one of the things that we also talked about was our ending reserves, and, and this was something that Vicki used in her presentations, I think, earlier this year, where it basically shows the, the dark black line that's kind of flat is our reserve policy at 16.7%. And then the general fund ending balance dropping all the way down beyond $40 million in the hole by the time we get to 2029. And I know that was another one of those questions from council, because we were looking at that and showing that we were going to still have a deficit even with $9 million. And what we tried to do was kind of show you what this looked like. The black line is your, is your reserve policy, and if you remember, at the end of '24, you changed from 16.7% to a 12% reserve, so that's why that number drops down so drastically in '24. And then also, your ending fund balance from '23 to '24, the reason that went up was the remaining revenue loss funds for the federal ARPA funds were put into the general fund. So it was a one-time blip, we threw it in there, and that's really why 2025, when you get there, we're going to have basically the black line and the red line be just about where we need to be at 12%. The blue line then represents, with a $9 million adjustment, whether that's revenue or expense, we will get through 2026, and you'll see that by '27 and '28, we will be, we will still be short. That's one that I will tell you that Vicki and I have talked a lot about this, I think there are a lot of opportunities, if we have some time, to really look at making some, some real positive changes that will, especially from a fiscal perspective, that we can, we can make, that we believe can, can help bring that blue line back up to be equal to the black line. It may be, but, but the big thing there is time. Time is really what we need to be able to look at and get some of these things accomplished. I know Vicki hasn't been here a year yet, I know I've been here three, just a little over three months now. I think with the, the great staff that's here at the city of Yakima, I think a lot of, a lot of those, a lot of that, that line can change and, and be black in the, in the black.
I think that, so I have a list of, of things the city can do, if I can make those suggestions, and I would encourage other council to think about that as well, and submit those to our city manager and financial director. One is that every class we have, every adult class we have ought to be fee for cost, whatever the cost is to facility and staff for that program, those fees should cover it. I think that youth programs could be increased, I think that we need to do them for at least half of the fee for cost. I believe that we can renegotiate some inter-local agreements. We can increase our YPD staff, and our, particularly, fire department staffs are fully staffed and save on overtime. We can look for specialized service fees, like hazardous material inspection, fire inspection, or privatizing that particular item so that we're not, we're not paying for that. Credit card fees, late payment fees, contract hourly rate services for our fire department servicing facilities where they care for people, and our fire department goes in and does medical lifts because their staff isn't trained. I think that if they're not willing to train and pay their staff to do that, then they ought to pay us a fee for service to provide that to them. Plan review fees, there's really a lot of things. I think, I know you're going to be looking at all the contracts as well, to make sure that we have, you know, a fair income or even income from those. So anything else that council can think of that you can give to city manager or our financial director would be very helpful, as we think about those things.
Yeah, I think that those are, that's a good list, and we can continue to think about those kinds of things, yeah.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Nope, that's okay.
We're done? No, you're not.
There's another slide, I don't see it, though.
I'm looking here, I just-
Something to the fut-, what about the future?
Yes.
Here we go, now I can see. Okay, so this is about that blue line and making it, you know, and, and the little picture of the airplane that I talked about, it was kind of flying, and we didn't want to hit the mountain, we wanted to pull up and get over. This is how we're going to do that, this is how we level off the budget and start growing for the future. So we are looking at streamlining, modernizing, we don't know what the future looks like with AI and other things, those are unknowns still, time will show. We will look at our contracts and renegotiate as, as it benefits the city. Gary and I have worked hard to create a business-friendly climate, and our, our whole senior staff is on board and working in that environment, trying to encourage businesses to come to Yakima, and we will be actively recruiting. We're going to try to steal business from someone else for a change. We are prioritizing how fast we can do permit and planning, we have a fully-staffed department now, they're, they're training up and they're gearing up for this. We're looking at, yes, we heard the fire inspection insurance savings, and looking at, you know, the, what it costs for people's homeowners and business insurances, and, you know, making sure everything is penciling for our community members. Working with other jurisdictions, I think there's a lot of opportunity there for the city to save substantial amounts of money. Privatizing can make sense, we'll look at that and do it where, where we can. And we have a lot of legacy things in the city, you know, like the cemetery, it's something that is part of our portfolio, and we will look at each of those things and try to shore up each of those programs so that they can pay for themselves and be more sustainable for us. In general, shoring up finance across the city is what we hope to do, just to, to get some stability and so we don't have to have this conversation with you guys, I know you're exhausted with it. That would be the goal. Continuing to make Yakima more attractive as a place for development, that means, you know, working and continuing on development at the mill site and other places so that it, it does go in the, not 20 years from now, sooner than that would be great. And then, you know, I think the, the public is engaged and listening right now, and I think that's fantastic, and I hope to see it continue as we do great, positive things in the future.
Yep.
And I think it is, it is back to you guys for discussion.
What is, what is this gray thing at the bottom?
It's just the-
It's just that-
You gotta look really close.
Yeah, much closer than I'm trying to. Okay. All right, council, open for discussion?
Yeah, I mean, I, I would just open it up with, I'd like to just have a discussion with council on, what are, what are your guys' thoughts on the cut packages? I know, so because of OPMA, this is our only time where we get to have a conversation with all of us here, and it's a really great time with everyone, all the time having business discussions like this. However, me and Councilman Berg and Councilman Glenn have been meeting to, you know, discuss these things, because it's, you know, been a, it's, it's a tough pill to swallow in any direction. You know, I, I made the comment to a friend of mine yesterday, I said, any way I go, people are mad about something when it comes to this budget. Everyone has told us as council what they don't want us to cut, they have also told us what they don't want us to tax, and they've also told us, figure it out. And the reality is, is that someone is going to be upset about something, no matter what we do in regards to this, and, you know, and I, and I, I don't want to discourage- we do in regards to this, and, you know, and I don't want to discourage open debate amongst council members, I also don't want to discourage community members from not feeling like their voice was heard. It's entirely a very difficult situation. I remember when I was, the three of us were put on council in twenty-two, the first study or retreat that we had as council, like fresh newbies to the council, looking at the projections of twenty-two and going, "Oh, Lord, this does not look good at all." Twenty-five, a twelve-point-three-million-dollar deficit, twenty-six, a twenty-two-million-dollar deficit, and twenty-seven, I mean, it was just like, we should just cease to exist at that point, because the reality is, is that I don't even think you could tax your way out of that substantial decline. And so I do want to commend this group, this seven, of actually getting us to a place where we did balance twenty-five. That was a tough role, and yes, it was one-time money, but it was also, that money was also committed prior to other projects, and we changed our minds and moved a different direction. So I, you know, I would like to say that. And the other aspect is, you know, from a twenty-two-million-dollar deficit of twenty-six, where we got sworn in as, to a nine million, I go, "Wow, guys, look at that, we did cut eleven," or whatever math is hard at the moment, a lot of money to get here. And so I just want to say, like, that's, there's going to be stuff that not everyone agrees on, and not everyone in the community will agree with everything that is said. And what that means, though, that I think is really important for our community to hear is, this is America. America was founded on debate, it was founded on having different ideas and coming to conclusions together, and figuring out what was best for our community together, not what was best for one side or the other, but what was best for each other, and putting and sacrificing our own, our own self-desires for someone else, and trying to figure that out. We have kind of lost that in this country. We have lost it, it's sad. And what you see that is transpiring all over our country for probably the last ten-plus years, has been just further and further of this not being able to have a civilized discussion. There are a few on the other side of the aisle from me that I have very civilized conversations with, and I appreciate them, because that is, that is a lost art in this world. And so, I say that because as we are trying to embark on this journey, which has been a journey, it, there's going to be someone always mad, but let's have a discussion to try to figure out what's best, so.
Thank you.
And we might disagree on how to get there.
We might, thank you, Detective Mayor Brown. I would say as well, you know, I think this council has done the last couple of years a really good job of making some of those decisions. I also want to commend the staff, you know, just even in this year that city manager Vicki Becky has been here, and some of the changes she's made, and new staffing like Craig Warner, that it really has, I think, increased our ability to understand as a council, with Mike Bailey being here, and the council making the decision to move into priority-based budgeting, I think made the council certainly far more aware, probably city staff far more aware, and certainly, we hope, the public more aware of what we, why we were actually budgeting and how we were doing that, it's much more transparent than the incremental budgeting that had happened so often in the past. So I think it is what helped set our path forward when we had our retreat, and set the priorities for budgeting for the city, and I'm grateful for that. I know that public safety is one of the things at the top of the list all the time, you know, for everyone I've talked to in our city, for or against tax doesn't make any difference. Their support for our police department and fire department is, you know, is just across the board, very high. And so I just wanted to thank our residents for that as well. We did, I think, a great job with the survey. We know that all the little parts of the decisions we make along the way, maybe not so little, I don't know, but they are going to make some people mad. Everybody has their favorites, whether it's the Yakima Food Center, or the Harmon Center, or Franklin Pool, or youth sports programs, or our fire department, or police department, and which, you know, which part of those, somebody's gonna be upset somewhere. And we'll hear about that, but that's okay, because we can, council can come together and make a, you know, a decision together, a cohesive decision, I think that our citizens are going to support that overall. One of the things that was very important to me in this process is that we did bring it to a vote before the citizens, that we didn't just say, "This is what we're gonna do, and do it," that we have taken the time to hear everything they've had to say to us, we've taken the time to analyze all of that compared with what staff thinks, what council thinks, what our budgeting committee thought, bringing all of that together was a huge chore and a hard chore for everybody involved. And I want, so I want to give everybody credit for that. So I hope that we can just reach a decision that we can agree on, and we'll be able to support the council decision as we speak to the public afterwards. I think that's important, that we come to a decision as a council, and then we all agree to support it. I want our, I can't say to the voters how you should vote, I just want you to know that we are going to ask you to vote, and encourage you to do that.
So we, we had on the table the six-million-dollar levy with the three-million cut package. I like this cut package, but there's a couple of things that maybe we could move things across. The crime analysts in the traffic unit, maybe we could find something over here to put so that they're not reduced or eliminated.
So can I, can I add to that?
Yeah.
So, the three of us met, we came up with about two-point-six million in cuts, a little under two-point-six million, and I'll just pass these to you guys. And what we did is we took, I don't have one for you two, I'm sorry.
Okay, there you go.
What we did is, we took everything that the staff had brought us, and, you know, I told the guys, I said, "Look, we cannot cut public safety, we cannot cut pools, we cannot cut the community centers, I don't want to cut parks, and I don't want to cut streets."
Say no cutting.
So let's figure out how to get there. And then, this is where we've got, too. And it's not, and then we added some other things onto the list, because in the scheme of things, when we, when we talk about, you know, what matters to a community, like what we saw in the surveys were, those five things are high priority to our community. And so, I, you know, we went through all of this, and I wanted to show this to you guys as a starting point, but also as a package to bring as a cut package. And so, I mean, we can go through that, because probably the public's going, "What is it, Matt? What is it?" It's eliminating lobbying and council travel, I feel like that's a no-brainer for us. I know people want us to fund fireworks, however, I'm a guy that's in a nonprofit, many of them, and you can fundraise that, I feel like you can. And so that's fifteen thousand. Reduce windows alive funding, that was ten thousand. Again, going back to the flowers downtown, another forty-four thousand.
And we may be able to have people who will.
Donate and fundraise.
Volunteer to do it.
Yep. Eliminate the funding to YCDAs. As someone who has sat kind of on YCDAs, I think this is okay.
This is just a reduction, right? Or eliminate.
Eliminating.
Okay.
What's that?
It's half, it's half.
Half, okay. All these words I took off of your spreadsheet or your thing, it says eliminate, I'm like, I don't know, it sounds so formal, but.
That one was eliminate, and it changed, yeah. It was fifty, I think, at one point.
Okay.
So it's just reduced.
It's reduced.
Okay. Reduce economic development staff, since it's not fun, it's not a person. Remove the Main Street match, streamline civil service. I don't know how Vicki's going to do that, but I believe in you.
Don't worry, I've got that.
Reduce financial service department, I also believe in you. So, eliminate the trolley maintenance for ten thousand, eliminate the alley maintenance, I know that affects districts one and two much more than the rest, but I feel like there's some other options that we can use to hopefully do that. Eliminate funding for sidewalk improvements. I did not reduce street maintenance, it's just that this is the total list, and then the tier one is the cuts, right? So, I didn't do street maintenance. I did do the crate reserve for snow and ice control funding. We did do the eliminate day camps, the watering, the graffiti removal, funding for the sports programs, community recreation, did not touch clean cities, eliminated youth sports programs or the funding for it. I think that was what you had mentioned earlier, Vicki. The legal department front staff, and I know, I'm sorry, Sarah, but, reduced animal control and parking, I think that was one, was it not?
Yes, correct.
Yes, okay.
One position, yeah.
The crime analyst, because I also had talked to chief, he felt like, yeah. Again, we can debate that if we want. Again, we've already talked about crime-free housing, the code, so this is, this is different from your guys' original package that you put. I love our code enforcement people, but I also think, you know, there could be some cuts in that front. Reducing the training budgets, it was in there twice.
We split it in half, so it could be under two tiers.
Correct.
Take less of a cut.
And I know that might sound interesting. A facility, so these ones are also not, like, they're not human beings right now, they're facility specialists, which I think is probably one of the coolest names for a facility specialist.
In City Hall, we have three folks who work in City Hall, you know, as far as working on the janitorial services and keeping the facility maintenance, yeah.
Economic Development Assistant, and then the Association of Washington Cities membership, in the scheme of things, I just feel like it's worth it.
Yeah.
And then, interpreter services, I know, so there's a lot in this space that has been changing. I did not know that, this is one that we could also just take out, but I'm, it's one of those things where I was like, me and Reedy were like, "Wow, there's, we do a lot with that," and I'm not unsure of all the things that it is, but that was something that was thrown in there, and then we didn't touch anything else. So that got us to about two-point-five million in cuts. Again, that's.
Well, if the chief is okay with the crime analyst being cut, I guess that's okay.
That's what I understood.
Okay.
So I have a question about however reducing the YPD and YFD training budgets, because we are holding positions open, there are people who are being interviewed already, who are, you know, being prepared for those positions, where, because we need to staff our jail. If we cut the funding so that, for every police officer to go through the academy, which we now have to pay ourselves, the state no longer pays that, that's, Mike, oh, I was cheaper here to help me out, do you remember how much it is, Betty?
He is, he's back there.
Vicki, chief, how much is it a person?
To go through the, how much should go through the academy now?
Seventy-five hundred.
Ten thousand.
Okay, yeah, seventy-five hundred, I think that's what he said, but yeah, just sort of ten thousand dollars per person to do that. So, depending how many people we're looking at, if we hire five for the jail, that's fifty thousand dollars right there.
We really need the jail staff.
Yeah, and we do. So, and I'm sure it'd be the same for the fire department, they have training, so I want to be cautious about removing a lot of training money, because.
What does that bring the training budget down to?
That I would, I don't know right offhand, I don't know if the chiefs would know, but I don't know, I could look.
Here comes Chief Markham.
Here comes Chief Markham.
You'd reduce the fire department budget down to two thousand dollars.
The training budget?
The training budget, yep. So we would have to eliminate some level of service, whether that's hazmat team, tech rescue team, or something like that, because that's where our training dollars go to keep those levels certified.
So how much is your total training budget?
Fifty-two thousand and some dollars.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, we can leave those in there.
Yeah, we can pull those off the.
Okay, I have another couple of questions. I do have, I know we didn't touch the clean cities, but I do have a question about removing graffiti removal, because that is a part of the clean cities team, the only person that does that, and that would leave a lot of our city facilities and houses and fences subject to ongoing graffiti, which really enhances gang communication activities, so.
So when I, when I asked Vicki about why she, because she put it in the, these guys put it in the one-point-eight million, and it was because they were combining some positions, theoretically?
Right. I think that is still not quite figured out, although here comes Scott.
Here comes Mr. Schaefer, thank you.
He may know, if it's covered, he can tell us.
Yeah, as I presented it a couple of weeks ago, if this position gets eliminated, we would roll the duties into the existing solid waste compliance officer positions, so they'll be doing trash cleanup as well as graffiti, so you're gonna have graffiti and trash more visible, because they can't get to everything as they are right now. So, it will delay our responses.
Okay. Thank you.
Was there any other questions for Scott?
I left, we left your street maintenance.
So the other question I had is reducing the fifteen thousand dollars for the irrigation, rewater coverage for DeHoma Cemetery, so that we end May for those two phenomenal, everybody is there checking on family members in that month, so.
We talked about whether we could do that with fee increases at DeHoma, possibly.
Possibly, yeah.
So possibly, we can do some fee increases to cover that, okay.
How come, I mean, we get irrigation on, right, April first?
We do. It's just that, you know, during that time, you know, the river's turning over, it's very murky, it's very, you know, there's a lot of, there's a lot of flow bowls into that, so it clogs up the screens, clogs up the pumps, you can't run the water, and so, and it's right at a crucial time when we're trying to present the cemetery for Mother's Day, Memorial Day weekend and so forth.
Yeah, Ken called it his Super Bowl.
Yeah, that's, we have people going out there just trying to clean it all up, get the water, and luckily, this year, you know, the weather was, you know, cooperative, but in the last couple of years, when we weren't able to water, we get a lot of complaints.
But.
From the living or the dead?
Man, that would be creepy.
I actually spent a lot of time farming, and one of the main things to farming was to have a good filtration system at the beginning, and filter the water before it goes to the sprinklers. I don't know, you've got to be able to do the same thing in this situation.
We have been, we have spent a lot of time, a lot of money doing that. Our last resort has been within the last years to convert to where, during that crucial time, if need be, then we can go tap into the domestic water. We used REIT funds to put that into place, so we have that option, it's just that when we do run it, we run into about fifteen thousand dollars, depending upon the, you know, the situation.
Big area.
Don't we get a discount for our own water?
At the end of the day, it's a wash anyway, because the money you pay for the municipal water goes back to the municipal fund, right? I mean.
Roundabout way, yes, yes.
So, it's kind of a false saving in that respect, because the money still stays in the City of Yakima.
But it's a different pot.
Yeah, different pot. Thank you, Mr. Schaefer.
Can we just, can we just do like a micro in lieu of utility tax on that station of water to ourselves? I'm just messing with you. His brain was already thinking it, too.
Chief Oil, did you want to come forward, please?
There was just two things I wanted to comment on. The general fund is a hundred and eleven, about a hundred and eleven thousand for training, and as we spoke about, academy attendance will eat most of that up. The second part is the crime analyst. One thing that if we do reduce that unit, I want the expectation that council would be aware that there'll be some delays in the ability to provide reports for council and to other types of data-driven approaches to crime and policing. So that's, although it's a position we could do, I think we could do see a reduction in, I think there's some valuable assets that are gonna be lost in that, because as we move towards data and 21st century policing, which is a lot of computerized and using and evaluating data, I don't have the aptitude for that personally, and a lot of us don't, so that's something they're specific to, but the dashboards, and then a lot of the reports that are requested that city staff, et cetera, use, that's what'll be impacted by that, so.
And I appreciate that, chief, and the one thing that we all know is that if we are able. to begin to change the course, change the course and things only level off and then in the next year it start to go up, we will be able to add things back in that we think are really vital parts of service and-
The other part of that, I'd like just for you to know, we talked about not bodies losing positions. There is someone sitting in that, I think someone's sitting in Sarah's position also. So as we talk about cuts and we're looking at plays, ways of doing it without impacting persons' lives and their ability to work, I think where we spoke about vacancies rather than people that are actually going to physically lose their jobs. So like I said, that would be a loss for us, I don't know, I apologize to Scott if that's a filled position, but I know Sarah, I believe, is also filled, so when you take that into consideration.
That is filled, a filled position? Okay, good to know, thank you very much. So the other thing is, you talked about eliminating, I don't mind eliminating adult, adult programs unless they are willing to fully pay for it, but I would like to ensure that we can keep some reduction for our youth. And so if we, if we take them to one half, be able to generate one half of the expense, that would make it thirty thousand rather than sixty-one. Just a thought, things I've been thinking about. And again, the, I don't see it on here, but where's it on here? The one traffic officer.
I took, that's not on here.
That's okay, I didn't think I saw, thank you, because I didn't want to lose anything.
And I said I didn't want to cut public safety on that.
So you, you didn't close Franklin Pool?
Nope.
No, because it's blank.
Sorry, everything on, on that.
So if it's blank, it's not, okay.
I think at the end of the day, it's not really wise for us as a council to try and identify everything. We've got people that we trust and people that we specifically selected to make some of these difficult choices. And, and to me, at this time, I think the critical issue is, do we want to put a vote to the people to make a decision on a levy? And, and I think that's probably the next step that we should do at this time. And the fine tuning on what we do to adjust can follow, that, that's not a critical issue. So at this point, you know, we started out, I was, a couple of weeks ago, I said, okay, let's just put the whole thing before the voters and see if they want to do it. And that number got reduced to six million, that's where we are right now. We got a resolution that got put together for that purpose. I think that we should move that to a vote now and see if we want to put it to the people, give them the opportunity to make that decision.
I think that we did, we did have resolution prepared, and we weren't, we, did we table it? I think we tabled it, yes. So we could do that this evening, but not taking a vote yet.
No, she's saying no.
We can't do it this, this evening?
It's not in the packet, can't do it this evening.
I think what we need to, we still need to direct staff to bring it back.
Right, so you can tell us to bring back whatever resolution you want, and we will bring it back to the next meeting, which is the fourth. Yes, which is in time.
We could do, if we, if we come to a decision tonight on figures, how much we want to put on a levy and how much we want to cut, just figures, I think that with our city manager and our financial director working together, they can fine tune what some of those things are going to be with recommendations from council. So what tonight we hope to do is, is make that decision, so that we can direct staff to come back with a resolution for whatever amount we decide. And then we can have a special meeting Thursday for about fifteen minutes, if we can do that. If they bring back a resolution by Thursday, we could, we could finalize it, so.
I think we need to probably figure out what the cuts are.
Well, an idea, anyway, I don't think we can give it a full dollar figure, but one of the other things I wanted to do was-
But it's, it's going to be dependent upon this levy.
Yes, it is. Can I finish?
Why, I wasn't finished.
Okay. Well, I'm going to say this, I did mention earlier, you don't have the, either one of the Harmon Center or the Washington Center on the tier one cut list, and I don't want to cut them either, but I think they can be responsible for, through fee, through fee changes or other things to, to fund a great deal of that, other than it being on the city. So I think, just like, for example, the Henry Bochamp Community Center, we own that property, but OIC pays a lease on the property, they run the program, they do everything at their expense with their staff. So if we had a group or an agency who wanted to, for example, contract for either one of those centers, they could do that. Or we could look at creating ways either shortening the hours or some other things, raising fees, that would make them much more viable for their own, their own income protection.
Yeah, I think that we can find that, that kind of opportunity in a lot of these things, but we can't really make a decision on them right now. But, but yeah, I think we, we should do that, yeah.
How they, you know, how they do, that may be different, but we could at least say we'd like to either have them go to halftime in terms of the hours they're putting in, or give them a dollar amount, yeah.
If we identify some of these places, I think we, you know, the staff that we have can figure out if there's ways that they can make it work on less money, and we can take a month or two to figure that out. That's, that's not a big issue. The big issue that needs to be cited is, are we going to put a vote to the people on whether to increase property taxes, and I think we need to move forward on that.
That's, that's why we're denying, I agree.
The, the bigger issue, though, is that you have to start at a cut, so that we know what levy. So if we put six million to vote, or seven, or ten, or whatever it is, we don't know what we're cutting. And so you're, if you put six million, you're still a half a million short at, at our cut package right now, at 2.5. So, like, tho- those are, those are the things where, again, when, when we're trying to decipher a, that's why we have this meeting tonight, is to figure out the cuts, so that if you're going to put a package to the voters, then it needs to be very clear on what this looks like. That's my two cents, that's why we, you know, the three of us put this together, was so that we could come forward with a cut package and, and move forward.
Now, I would, I would kind of echo that, I mean, we worked on this for three weeks, turning every stone over. We pretty much kept as much as YPD and YFD as we could. You brought up a good point about the training budget. I, if that's going to severely hamper the fire department, I think we should pull that off. But I think this is a good start. I think our emergency services are pretty much fully funded, aside from those training issues, but I wouldn't be opposed to pulling off the training budget. I think we could add more, but that's for discussion, but this would, this is what I would like to see move forward.
I think, I think there's some-
What else would you want to add?
Some stuff on here that you could probably add to that.
Let's do it.
Yeah. The alley maintenance, is that on here?
Yes.
Okay, fireworks is on here?
Yep.
I think I have most of them.
I would move that we direct staff to prepare a three million-
Councilwoman DCO is speaking right now, can you wait?
Oh, I didn't hear that.
Sorry. This one does have closed Franklin Pool on it.
Yeah, I didn't do that.
Yeah, I know. But, but because it is, is like, you know, it's got some problems, and we could cut it until it's time to fix it again, you know? I, I, I don't think that, that's a hu, I mean, I hate to say it, because I, I used to enjoy Franklin Pool all the time, but I think if it's ready to be fixed, that would be something, that would be a, a thing we could do.
Is it ready to be fixed in 27, or 26, or 28?
Our estimate is that we'd need a rebuild in, and I think if Scott's still here, he might be able to rescue me with the date, but I believe it was 2027, we were thinking it needed a slide replacement, and, and I think the structure is also needing a lot of work. So he might be able to give you more detail.
Yeah, you're correct, we have, right now anticipating 2027 as a major re-haul over that pool. If funds are available.
Right.
And if they're not, then the pool would be closed temporarily until there's funding available to do those things. It's not like we're going to bury it or anything, we're just going to wait until we have the funds to do that, is that correct? All right.
I don't want to eliminate it.
No, not to eliminate the pool, but the opportunity to use it in 27 on. I thought about that too, and I'm going back and forth, because I know a lot of people are really, I know, so. I, I put together, I know you guys, the three of you work together, but I did a lot of separate work on my own, or the same amount of time, the last several weeks, and I came up with about a two point, almost 2.3 million cut list. And so I think we just kind of need to look at these things together. And I'm going to go over my list, maybe not as thoroughly as you did, but the things I have on here that, that I somewhat differ with you is to, I had closing Franklin Pool marked as maybe, but I'm really not sold on that. To eliminate the crime-free program, streamline our civil services in the city, which will save us money as well. I put the eliminating of the training on here, but I'm no longer in agreement with that, so I'd have to take it off. I, also, I just thinking about, there are certain things that the city does that enhance the quality of life of our, our, our community. Those include the Franklin, not Franklin Pool, that includes the Harmon Fruit Center, that, Washington Fruit Center and Harmon Center. It includes our youth sports programs, and, and includes entertainment at the park. There are some of those things we will have to eliminate. I don't want to close either of our senior centers, but I think we can certainly reduce the amount of money that the city can apply toward those. Reducing their budget significantly and giving them the responsibility. We can either find sponsors or find someone who wants to contract and handle those things. I think that we can't afford to continue to fully fund them the way that we do. That was part of my cut list.
One thing I've, all the questions that I have asked you, Vicki, I did forget one. So, one of the things that we have battled with at council has been the, the sheer amount of parades that we have and the sheer amount of overtime that is with our officers trying to provide all of the things. And I think that was close to, is chiefs running around and here somewhere?
Are you still here, Chief Oil?
There he is, man, he's, he's just bopping around each side of the aisle.
He keeps changing seats in order to, please come forward, Chief Oil.
Can you remind me, it was somewhere in between like 120 to 160, in just providing police covers to all the parades?
I think we had a presentation last fall, it was over a hundred thousand dollars. The cruising bumped it up around.
It was fourteen thousand, wasn't it, like, for cruising, for overtime?
Per time, yeah. And I think we were over, well over a hundred thousand dollars in all the events that are hosted downtown.
And those are all overtime events, is that correct, chief?
Correct, almost everybody on those are all on overtime, and most of them are not reimbursed.
So I did talk to former councilwoman Cousins yesterday, and she was telling me that, because she's running this unfair parade, and she's like, I'm going to hate saying this to you, but I'm going to say this to you, is that there should be a fee associated to providing some, I mean, obviously, I don't know if they can afford a hundred and whatever thousand dollars worth of coverage and that, but that is coming directly out of general fund, that is something that is. Somehow, we should try to develop part of the permit or something that is a flat fee that could help offset, even if it's half of that cost.
There's also, in addition to ours, I believe Scott has some fees with parking, or streets come out and they're setting up, and some of that's on regular time and overtime.
The barricades and-
Correct.
And these are parades too, that are specified by code, not actually event permitted.
Correct.
Correct, yeah.
Yeah, the city code specifies, specifies the exempt events, and they're basically the parades, and the Salvation Army toy run, and the Harley Owners Group toy run, and the Fourth of July celebration. So that can be changed to require a cost recovery for all of those. And cost recovery under our code includes all city services, equipment and materials used by the city. So that's something that we can do by council action and require a cost recovery from all of those events, or some, or whichever ones you want.
So whoever is, is doing the, the parade would have to pay the city that-
Yes.
Because I know they collect fees for all the participants, but, you know, so they'll probably just have to raise those, I would assume.
It's a nominal charge.
Yeah, it is.
Right, it is, a nominal charge for the parade, a nominal charge for permitting, actually, for all of that for the city. So one option would be, and I don't know the comparisons, chief, but if we did the other things that are a cost, you know, fee for cost, to let them provide their own security, that that'd be a part of their contract, that they would hire their own private security.
Uh, you start dealing with traffic control enforcement, you're going to, it's, I would discourage using, hiring companies to do that. There's a lot of work involved with this, making our streets safe for those events, along with the additional law enforcement security. I mean, a flagger can stop the traffic, but they can't provide any type of assistance when it comes to this car driving down the middle of the road. There's nobody to stop that car that's driving down the middle of the road.
And Frank, that was your job, what happened there?
Frank's leading the parade, he's usually, that's about as far as he can go. But, I mean, some of the other, some of the other events do use a combination of law enforcement and flaggers in those positions, but I, I don't know what the cost is for a flagging crew versus a police.
I bring that up, not necessarily to derail us too far, but more so as something that could be brought back, is how do we do some cost recovery on that program that makes sense? Maybe it's half, maybe it's all, maybe there's a quarter, I don't know. But it, it is substantial money that goes to providing overtime in those areas.
That'd be an easy thing to figure out at the beginning, just this is how many officers it takes, how many hours, the average officer hourly rate, and we provide that upfront before the permit is, is approved.
Thank you, appreciate that, chief.
In regards to the Harmon Center and the, and the Fruit Center, I'm, again, I'm not in favor of touching the Harmon Center at all. I have personally gone, I was just at the Harmon Center two weeks ago, and was a very rowdy crowd, and it was great, we had a great time. However, I, I said then, and I'll say it again now, is like, I'm just, I'm not in favor of that necessarily, because it's, the thing that to think about with these senior centers is that it's, it's more than just a place of gathering, it's, it's, you know, some of, some of the folks are getting services there, like this is like their, this is their place to go, it's, and so I personally would, would be a no on touching that place, like I've said for the 28th time now, just because of that. Now, it doesn't mean there isn't potential for streamlining or other aspects to provide better service at the Harmon Center, absolutely, but-
I'm not in favor of shutting down either center as well. I believe they provide a tremendous service for our seniors in, in Yakima. So I'm not in favor of shutting them down at all, but I do think they should cover more of the costs in, either in time or in fees generated.
Yeah, and they did bring up, I think it was at our town hall that we did, was that, I don't think fees have been-
Touched.
In years.
Forever.
They were not opposed to redoing their fee structure.
No, and they even talked about a city resident charge, and then an outside of the city. Apparently that had been there in the past, and it could be revisited.
There's lots of ways to, oh, go ahead.
Oh, I just want to make sure I commented on the cuts and the packages. I know deputy mayor had asked about prioritization, so I want to make sure that, yeah, the youth programs and the city community centers don't be touched. I know there was a lot of communication on what does it look like eliminating and reducing some of these things as well. And I did want to ask either Vicki about the interpreter services. I know we didn't have all the information, maybe per request, because I know our friends at La Casa Hogar come once a quarter, or maybe they come maybe once a year, so what does that look like per, per visit or per, per meeting versus just eliminating everything?
Yeah, we will have to look into this number and what's included in that budget. It could possibly include court interpreter services in other parts of the city, not just this meeting. So I really need to do a little bit of homework before I can tell you what all is in that budget line.
I appreciate that, Councilman Har, because I didn't think about the other things as well, but usually it's when La Casa Hogar comes that we really have a high demand for the service, and maybe other times we would not, so.
Can I ask why the Franklin Pool is so much cheaper than the, than the Lions Pool?
Well, it's summer only, and the others year round. Yeah, I think- I think the building too has some cost to it, you know.
Been revoked, I didn't say it.
We swim in the winter.
Never mind, never mind, yeah.
Based on the discussions up to this point, I think that the wise thing would be to proceed with three million dollars in cuts and the proposal of a six million dollar levy, and I move that we direct staff to go forward on that basis to set it up, so that we can have this as soon as possible to expedite it getting on the ballot this fall.
I would second that.
So we have a motion by Councilwoman Glenn, and a second by Councilwoman DCO, to ask staff to bring back a resolution for a six million dollar levy. for a $6 million levy and $3 million in cuts. Why, it should just be for the levy itself and then, then staff would work up the cut package based on input from council?
And basically take the information that's been presented here tonight and everything that we've worked on over the last months and, and come up with the best $3 million budget and let's move forward.
Any comments or questions about that?
Councilman Berg, do you have anything to say?
Councilman Berg? I know.
Yeah, you know, I really want to make sure that we fully fund our police and fire. I just wrestle with the fact that, you know, the property owners are going to be the ones getting hit. That's where I kind of get hung up on this whole thing. Yeah, I gave them when I was campaigning and running and, you know, I gave everyone I spoke to, I don't want to raise taxes, I don't want to do this. So that's just my, it's just tough. And we've been handed, dealt a hand and we got to just deal with it, so. That's kind of my two cents. But as long as police and fire are taken care of, it makes it a little easier.
In your total that you had here, Deputy Mayor Brown, what was the total of your levy?
I didn't put a levy, it was a, we just did a cut.
Like 2.6 million is what he had.
2.6 in cuts?
So that's close to...
So there'd be a little bit more we'd have to add on to that.
There are some things we took off. Training, so that's 100, so you're at 2.5.
Looking at this from my perspective...
Don't know about interpreter. That, that literally was added though today with Councilman Berg.
Last second addition, yeah.
I know that there are a lot of businesses and there are a lot of people who are under financial stress in this city. And it kind of bothers me the fact that such a huge amount of our revenue goes to Olympia and gets dispersed and doesn't benefit the citizens of Yakima. I don't have a whole lot of control over that. At the same time, we want to keep our city functioning as well as we can under the circumstances. And I think as much as I don't like to even propose raising taxes, I think it's something that I don't see another viable alternative.
Right, I, that, raising taxes is hard for anybody to do and nobody wants more taxes. But I would like to see the city stay at at least the level of service it is now and get better, not go backwards. So I think this is probably the only thing we can do.
I think with $6 million, we've come pretty close to that in terms of what we outlined, those things that we think and our citizens think from our feedback are the most critical and important.
My, so just for my clarification, you're asking staff to come back, because we can't vote on anything tonight on that. It's just to add this thing to another meeting someday in the very near future?
Thursday.
Okay, Thursday, okay. And, and, and then we would vote on said resolution to whether send it to the ballot?
Yes, because you'd be voting on the actual ballot language in that resolution.
Okay, all right. Just wanted to make sure that was clear. So if someone who might, here's my deal with the, with the, the levy at 6 million. So I, I, I don't know if council remembers this, but I, I came to you guys, I think it was back in October or November of last year, and, and said, you know, I met with, I met with both fire and police unions. I met with both chiefs at the same time and our manager. And, and, and they were, they were, they would support a public safety levy. And they would help with those proposals. And, and I, and I had the challenge was, like, people want to pay for something that actually helps benefit them better, not just keeping status quo. And right now, I, the, the reason why I asked for the 27, 28 picture, and I'm, and I'm thankful for you two, right, to obviously have some forethought into that and, and I believe that you're going to get there. However, it, it is a, I've been in the speed of government for four years now. And it is a very tough challenge to ask anyone to just provide status quo when we get hundreds of emails of people upset about status quo.
And we always will.
Correct, but they want something that is, in my opinion, better. They want a better service, they want something better. And I'm, I'm unfortunately, I'm, I'm sad because we don't actually have a proposal that gets us something better. And, and that's kind of where I'm at in this levy because, again, and I, and I said this to them at the time. I said, look, I will probably take shrapnel from conservatives for even trying to, to put this out there as something as a public safety levy. But the reality was, is that those are the two things that people want better. They want more cops, they want more fire. They want more, not less. And this doesn't give them more. It helps them keep some, right? But it doesn't give them more. And, and that's, you know, and I, and I, I know we don't have time to figure all of that public safety levy out. There's just not enough time. We're on the, the final trajectory of August 4th and I get that. But it is a frustration. And it is one that I'm sad because I, again, I think people want, they want more. You know, I asked the question to a former chief of Bellingham. I said, what would it take to go from a three to a two? And he was like, in fire ratings. And he's like, I don't know, I haven't studied Yakima enough to know something like that. And I go, I know, those are, but when you go to a three to a two on a fire rating, that lowers people's insurance. Which then, when you go for a property tax increase, it's offsetting. And, and it actually makes sense to the homeowner because they're now getting better fire service. Now, it's too late for that and I'm not trying to derail us from that point. But that's kind of my, my hesitation with any of these levies is that we're, we're not solving. We're, we're putting a finger in the dike of the dam and hoping that we can somewhat solve it by 27, 28. And, and that's a, that's a bummer.
Well, what it does do though is give us hope that we can get there in a couple of years and there will be more for everybody. But right now, we do have to put a Band-Aid on this or, you know, stop the bleeding, you know. And, but I, I think that there is some hope with, if this passes, that we will be able to get there.
Thank you. Councilman Roy?
Wow. Hey, you know, just sitting here listening to everybody and it's great. I mean, we have a problem here. And it's huge. And I, I, we all, as we all ran, we ran...
Yo, it's the comedy guy tonight.
Yeah, I know, I know, I'm really, could be funny, my son's really good at that. But, you know, we, we all ran on not raising, raising taxes. And I hate taxes, you know, I don't want to raise anybody's taxes. And looking at here, and I know, I mean, for the fire and safety, I didn't want to replace, I didn't want to reduce any fire or police. And I like our programs and our parks. I don't understand why we didn't push more of the fire and safety levy in the parks levy, because that's what people want. And I know the city needs to take its responsibility and the reductions that it has to take without losing too much of what this, what Yakima's about. We live in a beautiful town, you know, we got some great people, great programs. And this is kind of hard. And I know Vicky, she's going to find some revenue getters for us, you know. Whether, whether it's going to be fees, we'll, we'll make up for it. And I know Vicky's going to do a phenomenal job with that. Don't know what it is yet, but she's got some ideas and she will come up with the difference in revenue without taking it to the property tax owners. So, gosh, you know, it's just up to the council to make this decision and put it to the voters. That's it, that's all I got to say.
Well, I'm going to agree with Deputy Mayor Brown in that it is difficult as, you know, just a conservative person to think about asking people for an increase in tax. And I've talked to a lot of people who feel that same way, who feel like we shouldn't do this. On the other hand, we are all people who benefit from the services that our city has to offer. I like having a fully staffed police department. I like having a fully staffed fire department. I like having pools available for our kids and our families. So many things about, there's hardly a thing on here that I, I don't like. And, and those services cost money. And so I think that with the $6 million, I'm hoping that as our city manager, Vicky Baker, and our financial director, Craig, that you hear that we really want our police department, our fire department to be fully staffed. You know, I think that's going to be an important piece and whatever it takes in, in adjustments, otherwise, we can hopefully find ways to do that. But that, that really is, is critical. So we have on, in the, on the vacancy list, but positions that are held, we have the fire, five people we need for the city jail. We have three firefighters that would, that would even out all the shifts and not use so much overtime money. So, you know, we have those things in place and I want us to be able to continue to fund them. And in the future, as, as our, our budget levels item begins to go up, that we'll be able to hire extra in, in all those departments, the things that are needed as well. So, so again, we are asking our citizens to think about it for yourselves and vote. Because we're going to be making a resolution tonight, or at least asking for a resolution, to put a levy lift on the ballot, so.
So we have a motion on the floor?
We do have a motion on the floor. Does anybody else wish to comment on the motion?
Again, this is just to bring it to the meeting.
Yes, great. On Thursday?
Yes. What time? Five?
Why don't we decide that after?
Okay.
Can I ask one question? One question, as you guys are considering cut packages and we have one here that's 2.5, but we're talking about a 3 million. Is, is there any, while we're having this discussion, any direction on the other 500,000?
That's what I was wondering.
Well, I did, I did recommend that we, that we cut some of the funding for the Harmon Center and the Washington Fruit Center. Certainly not to close them and certainly they can provide some of those really treasured and valued services by our seniors. We just may have less time to deal with or less money to deal with.
On the reduction of the parks maintenance, is that, is that like mowing less, watering less, or?
We control bathroom cleaning.
Yeah.
You know, it's people who do the tree maintenance, yeah.
Right.
Could we go volunteer to mow? Like, can I drive a big mower? I'd do it.
Can we get a big tractor?
My husband would love to do weed abatement in Kiska Park.
Voluntold.
I think one of, one of the differences that we have now is we have people who are Yakima natives who've lived here all along and they know what the city wants and they know what the city needs. And putting our faith in you guys. I, I think in years past, some of the things when they started talking about cutting budgets, they tried to make it look as bad as possible just so people would, would feel the pain and not make that stupid mistake to not vote for a tax increase. And I think the perspective that we're coming in with is that we don't want to do a levy, but we don't see any other way to make it happen and we want to make it as painless for the community as possible. And I think that attitude has a lot to say on the whole issue.
Yeah, thank you.
Maybe I would do reduce Clean City program, to answer your question. Reduce Clean City, but only, only 85,000. Leave it at 100.
Yeah.
Like, so don't, don't reduce it all the way.
Yeah, I don't want to get rid of that.
I think the cut package we can work with after we make a decision on, on a resolution.
So you're just, I just was asking so that I know whether you're going to close the gap with cuts or you're really looking at needing 6.5 million in revenue. I wasn't sure which way we were going.
We're trying to get to 3.
So we're going to get to 3 million in cuts, okay.
The Clean City program has a way to make revenue too, right? With like pickups, is that part of that, you know, the, the junk pickups?
I think that goes into the refuse enterprise fund.
Okay, okay.
The thing I'm looking at is, as a council, we rejected 10 million. We rejected 7.2, 7.3, 7.1. We agreed on 6. It's a miracle we agreed on 6.
Oh, not yet, barely.
Any other discussion, my counsel?
Just a question of Vicky, is there, to make up this little bit of difference, is there stuff that we can do with, you know, the parks and the Harmon Centers of little like fees that we can increase at all to help cover that gap?
We tried to account for a lot of that in this package, but I, we can take it back and, and see what we can figure out and go back to the staff.
Kind of see what revenue gain, or I'm in a business that, you know, we always looking at revenue too, as we're looking at cuts, we're also looking at revenue, so I'd like to see...
We can bring to you Thursday.
Yeah, that would be great, to bring some...
Some new ideas.
That we can cover these gaps with possible small revenue places, places where we're lacking, where we could probably increase. I'd love to see that.
One of those that I did bring to you today was like refinancing the, if there's opportunities of refinancing the bonds at all. I know we have some debts, but we've paid off a lot of the debts. And so maybe refinancing my, interest rates aren't great, but, but maybe refinancing a lesser amount would lower our amounts. I don't know. That was something I asked today to Vicky and I was like, oh, come on, you can't get that in five minutes, let's go.
Well, you know, and that would depend on the current rates as to the rate we're paying versus what the rates are now, so, yeah.
We'll take a look at it.
And we mentioned fees, so maybe the master fee schedule to bring that as well to see potentially increasing those. So we're ready to see what we want to potentially increase.
Yeah, I think you're correct on that.
I, I think the thing to remember as well is, we're, what we're doing in a lot of these is we're going to pull the general fund money away if there's fees or things like that that can go back to offset it. That's, that's what we, we would look at.
Any other comments or questions, my counsel?
Did I give you enough direction?
I think so.
Yay, go, Vicky.
Clear as mud?
So, so we have a motion on the floor?
The motion is to direct staff to prepare for a Thursday meeting at 5:30, a resolution to put a levy on the ballot for $6 million and an accompanying budget reduction of $3 million to make it balance.
And I seconded it.
Now at 5:30.
All right, then we can just take a show of hands votes. All of those in favor, please say aye, raise your hand.
Aye.
One, two, three, four.
Sure, yeah, I'll send it to the, I'll send it to the thing on Thursday.
Five, any noes? Two noes. So it's a 5 to 2 vote and the motion passes. We'll be waiting for Thursday.
It's because Reedy didn't want it at 5:30.
Is there a different time that would work?
No, no, 5:30 is good.
Agenda item 4D, which is a discussion for potential charter amendments. Sarah Watson's going to break that, but I believe that Deputy Mayor, you, you brought this motion forward, do you have anything in mind?
Yeah, I have nothing in mind for the charter amendments. More so I was asking what the timeframe was. It sounds like the exact same timeframe.
It's the same timeframe as putting anything on the ballot. So if there are charter amendments that you want to propose for approval of the voters, they have to also be to the county elections division by Tuesday, August 5th.
And at this time, I feel like with all of this, I don't think it's a good time.
To review the charter, no. Later day.
I don't want to be here till midnight tonight, so.
I think we're setting a study session to review the charter anyway, sometime after this.
After this, great. Any other discussion, my counsel? Any other new business?
Nope, there's no new business.
Oh, that's right, wait on study session. There's nothing new, nothing new, trust me.
So now we adjourn? So do we need a motion for the 5:30, or are we good now with that?
I think we can set it for 5:30. We'll provide notice that there will be a special meeting on Thursday at 5:30. This will be the only item on the agenda other than public comment, which is required at all of your meetings.
So we have our 20 minutes of public comment and then?
15 at the study session, yes.
Well, a special meeting, probably 15 would be fine, I would think.
It's 15 at all of your study, or special meetings do, based on your bylaws, which you can extend if, if there are a lot of people.[1763.41]